Commissioner Freeman, the one of the leaders of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time I would like to call your regimeme in the Gates County Board of Commissioners for January 7th, 2019 to the order. The first item on our agenda is approved on the minutes for our regimeme on December 30th by the nineteen twelfth legislature board. Are there any corrections to be made?
I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. At this time we have the agenda. I do have a couple of adjustments to the agenda at this time. If you will look under new business, we need to add thirteen appointment to child protection team and number fourteen local channels. Also in addition to that, if under new business, resolutions seven and eight, we'd like to move that up to the under number Roman numeral five, that is a very ideal county calendar resolutions.
That is correct.
And there is no closed session.
No closed session.
Madam Chairman, could you state number thirteen again, please?
Okay, appointment to the child protection team. Mrs. Holly will be taking care of that.
Madam Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the agenda of adjusted. Second.
Motion's been made and prompted to second to approve the agenda as adjusted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, passes. Okay, first item on our agenda is delegations. We have a nice delegation from, well, delegate, I don't know if it's a delegation, but it was like Reba, Green Holly. This is a nice delegation of being, I'm going to just.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Board of Commissioners. My name is Ann Holly, Gates County Assistant Director slash Chairman or Chairperson for the Gates County Agent and Adult Services Task Force. We are here today per request of the Gates County Agent and Adult Services Task Force that last met on December fourteenth at the Gates County Department of Social Services, and they had some concerns regarding the status of their request for the CDVG funding in regards to the senior center, proposed senior center in Gates County. And Reba Green Holly is the Chairperson for the Senior Center Committee, so we're here today to present concerns.
First, I'd like to say good morning Commissioners and happy new year. As Ann stated, I was asked to represent the Senior Center and the Task Force in bringing forward our concerns. On September fifth, we had a public hearing for the North Carolina Neighborhood Grant application. Commissioner Jordan motion appropriation be considered of $100,000 second by Commissioner Freeman, and it was approved. We left the meeting under the impression the senior center would be included in the N.C. Neighborhood Grant. Impromptu call by Ms. Ann Holly to find out if the grant had been submitted resulted in being told the quote from the contractors for renovation was needed in forty-five minutes by ten a.m. that day, and this was at nine fifteen, or the grant would not include the senior center, and the deadline had been extended. The quote was never an official request from us. As a result of my concern about what it would cost, I initiated going to the contractors to find out what a quote would cost to renovate the dental clinic for the senior center. At that time, he told me, A.R. Chesum, that he could not give me an official quote. He would ballpark it on the high end because he did not have time to have his subcontractors to come in and look at it. So I gave him the list of the utopia of what we would like to have in a senior center, which was in the research notebook that was given to you. So with everything included, he indicated he would estimate, but not be held accountable for $300,000. But for what we had to actually do to the building, the $100,000 would have been enough to get us in the building and start the senior center. This information was emailed to the County Manager by way of Ms. Melissa Lawrence with that information in it that stated the $300,000, but also indicated that the $100,000 would be enough and the reason why it was $300,000 initially. We heard nothing from the County Manager after that. The December Commissioner meeting announced and Gates County Manager report that the senior center was not included in the submitted grant. On twelve fifteen, I emailed, on twelve fifteen, I emailed to Natalie and Ms. Harper requesting status of the grant, why funding was not included. Natalie responded, Ms. Jordan's motion was only consideration for allotted $100,000. Micronet Grant Consultant indicated the application would be stronger without the senior center. Only the four houses were included in the grant. Conversation with Commissioner Jordan indicated they were not aware that the grant had been submitted without the senior center until after the fact. Our concerns are, when does the consultant's decision get higher priority than the citizens of Gates County and the Commissioners? As a grant consultant myself, I understand the role of grant consultant, and it is not to override the potential grantee's request if it is allowable. My first question is, what were the specific reasons that the senior center was not included? And then, the grant required two public hearings. The second one had, you were proposed to propose the project with cost information. The second hearing had no information about cost information and the total project except for the approved $100,000 that could be allotted. Second question is, what was the requested amount submitted in the grant? The grant was for $750,000 max, no limit on the number of houses, activities completed in thirty-month period. Homes generally cost $50,000 when you're renovating them under this grant, even if you went up to $75,000 or $100,000 to renovate the house. There was plenty of money to put into grant to include $100,000 for senior center and four homes. The county is one of four without a senior center. It's a shame that an opportunity such as the North Carolina Neighborhood Grant was presented to us to address our housing needs and senior center needs and it was not taken advantage of. It would not have cost the county any funds since the grant did not require matching funds. Our second concern is the lack of communication and transparency with the official committees charged with addressing and providing leadership to senior and agent concerns in the county. As partners in this process, the committee chairs should at least be proactively notified of any relative information and changes as it relates to resources. Never any proactive communication from the County Manager concerning the senior center changes nor anything related to the grant. As a member of the Housing Committee, which is an official committee and provides input on housing issues and rehab, we have not received any information concerning what was submitted. What is the point of asking people to serve on your various committees if they are not communicated with relative to the responsibility that they have been tasked with and recommendation ignored? The Gates County Agent Committee and Senior Committee would like to be proactively kept informed on a timely basis in the future concerning this project as it relates to available resources, changes in decisions, et cetera, since we are operating in official, as official committees and as a team with the Gates County Commissioners to improve the quality of life for the Gates County citizens. So I refer back to our two main questions dealing with updates on the reason why this was not included in the grant.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. We'll take that as consideration of your concerns and for letting know at a later time.
Madam Chairman, if you would, I think that right now, we need to know how much our grant is on the board at this time.
This was going to be part of my report. The state has already, the North Carolina Housing Finance has approved our grant for $750,000 to demolish and rebuild four houses for citizens in the county.
Just four houses?
Yes, sir.
Seven hundred fifty thousand?
Yes, sir.
And not any money left over?
There is no money left over. Everything was spelled out in the grant, all $750,000 because of the condition of these houses and between that, the consultants fees, the soft cost administration, it will take $750,000.
About how many?
For four homes.
That's going to be pretty close to $400,000 alone?
Correct.
That's going to be pretty high, though. I'm just a little bit concerned that if we don't have any leeway for housing, any money to set over, and I'm pretty sure we ran out quite a bit if we get $750,000. And we have received.
Yes, we received a confirmation Monday.
I think some discussions about our grant, on this issue, we've got to have the thought of it. See what we can do to make that happen.
There is no leeway. I can share the grant application which was submitted to my office as available for review if someone would like to see it.
So we have to spend $750,000 on four homes?
Yes, sir. That's what was submitted and that's what was approved.
Possibly a hundred, $100,000 plus on the total?
Correct.
Which seems a bit, seems a bit.
Well, I think that's demolition in last quarter.
Correct.
Speaking historically, from these grants, what we've done in the past, that's huge, that's a huge number, probably more than double any house we've had.
And this is not CDVG through Congress. This is a different.
Right.
Correct. This is a different entity that is funding this program.
Commissioner Jordan, are you familiar with the four homes we're speaking about?
I'm familiar with one of them, and the home we're currently speaking about, possibly it's less than $75,000, which is even newer than the home. So to replace that home, if we spent $100,000, I would worry about a little bit of dilution of our resource.
Something about the demolition deals, Natalie, I understand each house is not going to be the same, but some of those have run $14,000?
Fifteen and sixteen.
So demolition, a hanging demolition might be.
And if I remember correctly, at least two of these have septic tank issues, so there will be new septic tanks also associated with these homes.
I just think it would be good if we could speed up and make it. I know you say that anyway, but sometimes when we talk with them, they have ideas that we do not commit or have, or I do not, yeah, extra money.
I'm not sure where you, I'm not understanding what you mean by extra money. I have some files that's in a folder that I do not have access to right now, but as I said, I would like to table this and discuss it later when I can bring that grant application so everyone can review it.
No, Madam Chairman. First of all, we do not know how much each one of the houses is worth, okay? We don't know. So since we don't know the actual cost of each house, right now, we can't say how much money we're going to have to do all of it.
No, in the, in order to receive the $750,000, each house had to have an amount associated with it, so that's how they awarded $750,000.
You had to include a budget.
Yes, for each house.
An estimated budget.
Correct.
These, these four houses have already been chosen.
These are the ones that were recommended because these four houses had costs that far exceeded any of the other essential, essential single-family rehab programs that we have. So these are the four that needed the most work. They selected them from those applications. Of course, these applications will have to be reviewed to make sure they still need all the income per qualification, because something may have changed between their initial application and this application.
For one house, what would that seem to look like?
I can't pull it up. I saved it into a file that is in unlocked folder or not locked folder, shared drive that we do not have access to over here.
All right. I think we need to discuss it later.
Well, we can always table it until our night meeting, which will be January twenty-third. Get the information to all of us so that we can see.
So you just want a copy of the application?
So I think that's what we'll take it up again at our night meeting.
I would, I would like to, you know, it's good to get somebody to notice. I don't want to fold, book up just because it's never happened before and say they won't adjust. I think we should, I mean, none of us dreamed that we would get $750,000 speaking from this seat here. Okay, so I'm really surprised at that. But who knows, let's, let's pursue an adjustment and let's level tell us, like you said, let's level tell us new two or three times.
Well, let's see the application.
Yeah, Ross, yes, and if we have to bring that person here to close session or whatever, I'd like to say to Ms. Holly and Ms. Holly that I put a question mark, I put a little asterisk about communication issue on my paper here. Madam Chairman, I'd like for us to, where committees are concerned, not just this committee, but any committee, that we have a, a thought out process or communicating, email or letter or something, or visits, because these people, they are volunteers, but when we appoint someone to the committee, we expect them to take it serious, so. So if there's any apology necessary there, there it is. So we'll have it on the agenda for our next meeting.
Okay, I thank Ms. Holly and or Bookman Holly for coming, and we will see, we will take a look at it at our night meeting on the twenty-third.
I'd just like to end with this quote, "This is not the time to ignore or fear the possibilities. It is the time to embrace the endless opportunities in front of us and work transparently and collaboratively to achieve the desires of the citizens of Gates County."
Thank you so much. Okay, anyone, that was the end of the nice delegation, unannounced. Has anyone signed up? No. Okay, moving along then to Roman numeral four. The Secretary of Public Reports will start with the County Manager.
This report is from the November. November seventeenth through December fourteenth, the interior of West Wing has been painted as a historic courthouse. Work on the floors of the first floor will begin the second week of January. Interviews for several physicians were held during the aforementioned timeframe. The R C D met on December fourth. Mayor Michelle voted to change the bylaw to allow two full-built four meetings a year instead of four, and to allow notice of changes from fifteen days to seven days. The town of Gatesville Park on Bennett's Creek will receive a new picnic shelter roof and a pier. Do you have any questions?
What position do you have?
Nine-one-one had part-time dispatch positions available.
Any questions or comments for the County Manager? Okay, moving on to Tac, Ms. Lane. Ms. Lane.
Good morning. I may happy new year to all. As my report indicated from last week, the collector's report for the month, we're undergoing that now, all those compilation and data will be sent to you. I do want to report that for December, we have collected over 1.8 million, just as law part. That's with all particular codes, G O one, fire, so I just wanted to, again, that report should be available early afternoon. I'll report it as soon as this update is complete. I have quite a few special refunds for this month. It's that time of year where we get mortgage payments in with escrow and some other items that we were seeing.
Okay, I guess you will want to take these up at this time?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, in our package, you saw the list of refunds. You had to go through these one on one.
They, two of them were a little bit, all of them basically are really overpayments, but that would be up to the board. If there's any explanation of any of these, certainly I can touch on there. Basically, all overpayments in light of.
I only have one question.
Okay.
And then after that, I'd be okay with doing them all together. Tell me what an inactive parcel is.
Those, this, this particular instance, when we do a split parcel in the county, in theory, the inactive parcel is just that. This particular parcel was a split of a large law firm tract, and resulting in two descendant pin numbers, of course, and for whatever reason in our database, it tagged the inactive parcel that is basically, should be retired. It created an abstract for it in error. Of course, this was our first year billing with the new software, so we had a few anomalies. But traditionally, that inactive should be, no abstract off the books. In this particular case, it did tag this inactive having a number deal which was paid in addition to the two descendant parcels costs are paid. So a bit of a, a unique thing, certainly in looking at that and, you know.
That pretty much would be if we see inactive parcel again and report that most likely to be a similar situation.
That is true. So once we retire it, in theory, there's no abstract, because in order for, for us to bill with anything, an abstract is created in that an account number specific would be average. This particular, unique case, it did not eliminate it from our database and it pulled over for, for tax bill in theory, so, yeah, unique case.
Did anybody else have any questions, like any of these as they read through? Okay, we will entertain a motion to, for refunds one through six.
I'll second that motion, that we provide refunds in these policies requested. Madam Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Your motion is denied and seconded that we refund one, numbers one through six. Any additional questions or comments?
For the audience, Madam Chairman, it's like making note that Tax Department just on these six refunds, they don't take them lightly, and neither do we if we send the money back. We have about close to thirty pages of documentation to the board to see that they are, they aren't due a refund. And I'd like to thank Ms. Lane for doing that.
We'll always properly document. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Also, now we have one in here about spreadsheet for the tax service.
Yes, ma'am, Loretta, our tax service item, they also are the result of our overpayments, if you will, getting from the Loretta Tax Service as well as sometimes it's a law firm to enclose, and sometimes it's the taxpayer itself, because we do send out the tax notes to the taxpayer as courtesy for their records. They'll bring that bill in, they're going to pay it, and that's why we get a check three weeks later from the tax service. So those things often, you know, occur. So in this case, we have two particular parcels, this, or that, I'm saying.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the refund for the tax service firm, Loretta, a little city.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and prompted second and discussion on that one. Here in none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, Zachias.
Yes, ma'am. That was to inform the board of some additional suits. As we recall, I just want to touch on the last summer and, well, even early spring, there was a concern that they, the L S, Zachias, our firm we utilize in James County. We wanted to be more aggressive with some of the whole closures, but they've been at the law firm for a good number of years. We get calls all the time, certainly people interested in property and wanting to purchase it. So in order to kind of update the board and keep you informed of those things that we want to be able to, in this media, certainly pick up the pace, if you will, and Mark Farnell and his staff, they've made a number of visits down here, been a little bit more aggressive, I think, in getting some of these all back on the books or either at auction in the courthouse steps. If you get any phone calls, certainly, we always get the question chiefly, can I pay $300 on an account that is delinquent $6,000? And the short answer is yes, but that does not stop the foreclosure process. We've had quite a few conversations with taxpayers. We won't, we're not in the business of turning money away, but they must understand with these suit costs and additional attorney fees, they accumulate accordingly. We cannot waive them after the fact, and that's why we reach out and do all the processes beforehand. So I just want to advise the board, if you get some questions, those are by standard as we would in any particular case of what we deal with.
And you also can set up a repayment plan for taxpayers.
Before it reaches this point, yes, ma'am, before we get to the level where they've already been served their paperwork from the Sheriff's Department and added suit costs and all these additional fees, before we get to that point, yes, ma'am, we, we work with the number of people who do have delinquency, they reach out to us, so, before we get to this point. Once we get here, we're almost beyond, in a, in a different realm, if you will, so I just want to keep the board informed of all those cases that we are reporting on and posting your signs, hopefully the first of the year on some property.
And also, when we get our tax information from you, you know, in September, you have a paper in there where you can go ahead and do it by quarterly's or three times a year.
Yes, indeed, yes.
So you give them options.
Oh, we do, yes, yes, indeed, with payment plans and all those things that they, you know, before we get to this level, so.
I just want to make people aware of this.
Yes, indeed, because that's a costly process, it's time consuming for the full closures, it is, it is a bit, you know, in depth. So before we even get to this level, we'll, we'll do another second mailing in February, and of course, a little advertising. So we do all those myriad of steps.
Okay, Ms. Owens?
The one at the top of the page, word says tenth assignment. Just tell me about that. Just tell me about that.
Um, the, the, the tenth, uh, assignment, if you will, is in fact that number ten of all the assignments that have been submitted to Zacchaeus since, uh, October two thousand and twelve. And we originated our relationship, our contract with Zacchaeus. So this particular one, and very hot, was in the tenth batch, if you will, uh, tenth assignment that we submitted this past summer. Um, you may recall, every, every autumn, every summer, we'll, we'll submit a batch of at least forty-six, fifty-two accounts. We'll present those to the board, um, that we would like to begin foreclosure. So the tenth assignment is, is kind of noting in our relationship with Zacchaeus as, as the tenth round of cases, uh, that we have currently. I think we've got about a hundred and three plus remains that are open. I'm going to reach out to Z L S and Zacchaeus and see if they'll update a spreadsheet. I can get that to the board, um, every so often. It's like a status report, Commissioner Owens, everything. We'll get a batch of how many submitted, how many settled, how many opened.
Thank you.
Okay, yes.
And the advertisement for delivery taxes will be?
Uh, in, in March, we typically should-
I know you did the mailing and felt worrying of time to-
That's right, yes, ma'am. They'll advertise and they'll start our garnishment process, of course, as a ticket type and items, yes, indeed, before we, we get to it.
And for the, uh, information on the topic, as a reminder, our last day for, uh, that agreement, we've got made on January seventh.
Uh, January seventh, without interest, at five o'clock. January eighth, uh, of course, the, um, interest will accumulate. Had a little bit of window of time, but it was the fifth, naturally, fell on the weekend. By general statutes, it is moved to the next, uh, January seventh.
January seventh?
Yes.
All right, and it's, uh-
Monday.
Monday.
Right, and of course, the list of addresses we're made of, we've, um, asking people, who may qualify for any exemption, uh, disabled veteran status, please come by and see us. We've got all that paperwork. Uh, the income amount did increase this year, thirty thousand two hundred for the elderly exemption. Uh, that is set by the Department of Revenue with a COLA adjustment. We get that every summer, so we know what that threshold is, so, yes, indeed.
Okay.
Busy time of year, isn't it?
Oh, certainly, yes, indeed, yes, sir.
The holiday season, is your busy season?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Well, thank you for your work you do over there, um, down.
Absolutely. Lori, Shelley, and Sharon, of course, everybody in place, I'd like to thank them.
Thank you. Um, reports from any of the other departments?
Uh, Madam Chairman, I have a question for the, uh, for, for Trese.
Okay, yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you? Signing in?
Happy New Year. Just two quick questions. Um, number one, Dee, you ordered two new vehicles. How many miles before we order new vehicles, and how often are you doing that? How many miles do we get per year per vehicle?
It depends on the, the type of vehicle, and it depends on the budget the state establishes, the miles, what the minimum miles are. The miles are at the October first, the previous year. So October first of two thousand and eighteen decides what van will be approved for two thousand and twenty. And I think the two vehicles that have been approved, one of them, I think, there's a minivan, and then one of them, a standard out van. So for a minivan, it's like a hundred and twenty-five thousand, which by the time we get the van, because it takes a while for them to reach whatever projections or whatever, is over two hundred thousand. And then for a standard out van, it's about the same, maybe a hundred and eighty thousand. So those are the two that have been, have been ordered.
Can you have a rotation basis, uh, pretty much, so?
Yeah, and we have a rotation basis that we need depending on how many people, whatever. The state establishes that, and it changes from year to year, decided depending on what lines are ever. It doesn't necessarily mean that we will get them, but those are the ones that are black.
How long does it normally take to, uh, get about a hundred and eighty thousand?
On our bills, generally, it doesn't take a long time.
Maybe four, five years?
Five years is like tops, pretty much. Um, and that's generally on the bigger vans. On the, the smaller vans, two hundred thousand of them, maybe three years, four years, something. We have to do a lot of miles.
So apparently, I haven't been able to-
They are free. I might have one vehicle that's five years old, and that would be that, like, transit vehicle. Other than that, no.
Thank you, Trese.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for your job you do. Um, any, um, reports from any departments? Okay, um, as the Chinese calendar, um, we know that our meeting is on January the twenty-third. That Monday is Martin Luther King holiday, and Tuesday is Bible study night. So we have to have a long visit.
It's probably be there.
So, that's right. Um, we don't interfere with that night, so, uh, all that. Okay, before, now we've come to new business. I'm, I mean, we're going to do resolutions. And, um, Commissioner Freeman has a, uh, we're going to ask, before you reach the, we got a date on this resolution. Uh, we have a resolution honoring Edith Holmes Freeman-Salin on her birthday coming up. My pleasure, the board.
Madam Chairman, I have a motion that we present this resolution to Miss Salin on her one-hundredth birthday, or one-hundredth birthday, in six months.
Okay.
And I'll second the motion, Madam Chairman, with pleasure.
Okay, a motion denied, part three second. I don't think there is any discussion, but is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, now Commissioner Freeman will read our resolution.
Yes, ma'am. I, certainly my pleasure, I'm certainly honored to do this. But I must say, uh, prior to reading this resolution, I'd like for everyone to know, because many of you don't know, that, uh, Edith Holmes Salin, Freeman-Salin, is actually Sissy. To Pitt, Tana, sometimes Peggy and Billy, depending upon how we refer to her. And that name has, uh, been around for a long, long time. So thank you, Sissy. And we have to thank Waldo for leading into that. And Waldo's better known, that's Sissy's mother, Ginny Best Freeman, Virginia Freeman. And, uh, they all got nicknames. So Sissy started off as the oldest, uh, with the name Sissy, followed by June and Me. Pitt's mother was Me, and Anna's mother, uh, father was June. So those names were given by some character to each one of them that could not pronounce their names correctly. It is Sissy, and it remains Sissy, so thank you, Sissy. With that, I will, uh, read the resolution. Resolution celebrating Edith Holmes Freeman-Salin's one-hundredth birthday. Whereas Edith Holmes Freeman-Salin was born January ninth, nineteen nineteen, and whereas Ms. Salin will be celebrating her one-hundredth birthday on January ninth, two thousand and nineteen, and whereas Ms. Salin has lived a life of service, being an active member of the Gates County Historical Society, Gates County Library, Board of Trustees, Arts Council, Murchison Mill Pond State Park Advisory Council, and lifetime member of Ronson Baptist Church, just to name a few. And whereas the Gates County Board of Commissioners are thrilled to know Ms. Salin will be celebrating her one-hundredth birthday and honored to join her family and friends in congratulating her on this special day. And whereas Ms. Salin reflects upon a century of memories and accomplishments, we hope she is filled with joy and optimism. And whereas the Gates County Board of Commissioners hopes Ms. Salin is blessed with good health and happiness throughout her one-hundredth year and beyond. And now therefore, be it resolved, the Gates County Board of Commissioners wishes to extend to Ms. Edith Holmes Freeman-Salin a very happy one-hundredth birthday. Be it further resolved that this resolution adopted this second day of January two thousand and nineteen, shall be entered into the minutes of the Gates County Board of Commissioners and a copy presented to Ms. Salin at her birthday celebration. So thank you, Sissy. I must say, one thing I didn't notice on here as accomplishments is she was, I think, the first truant officer in Gates County Representative School. And I ran into Sissy, first truant officer, so, uh, and I run into quite a few folks that are even older than I that, uh, she, she visited their home and made them go to school. So Sissy, thank you. Thank you for all your years of, of our family, and, uh, you're always Sissy. So congratulations. There, Sissy standing up, Peggy and Billy are, uh, are children. Peggy left with her daughter Sally.
This is certainly a pleasure to present this proclamation to you. Ms. Salin has been a friend and mentor to me. I first met her, we served on a biceptinal committee together in nineteen seventy-six. I was only a child. And, uh, Ms. Salin was just a teenager. Uh, but anyway, uh, she has been truly a true friend to me. When I taught my Gates County history course, I used to tease that I got paid to do the job with Ms. Salin all the time, um, because I had to tip her brain. But Ms. Salin also has an old trick. If you ever get a phone call from Ms. Salin, she'll say, um, I was thinking- And when you, and when she says those words, you knew that she wanted you to do something. And she is amazing and highly regarded people. She can do, get to do various projects. Uh, we certainly appreciate what she's done to Gates County. Uh, we continue the heritage and history that we have, and we hope that she has many more, uh, much more power than us.
Right. Thank you, thank you.
And we're looking forward to your birthday celebration.
We're ready to go.
No, you cannot.
Would you like to say one?
Would you like to say something?
Oh, this has been probably most important work I've ever done. And the first thing I was doing, I went to a place, a cure for most of them. I said, "May, was this someone's birth?" I said, "May I see you?" Yes, they're back in a wood plane, you go see if you want to. And they were just naked and they came to me.
Well, you went the extra mile. I hope they got some clothes before they went there.
I used to beg everybody for clothes and magazines and everything. I kept my station wagon full of things that they could use.
Well, and you made a difference in their lives, because education is key. Opens the doors of future. Okay, at this time, uh, we have a resolution honoring Commissioner Henry Jordan. Do I have a motion, Jack?
Yes, ma'am. I will make a motion, uh, that, uh, we accept this resolution to honor Commissioner Henry Jordan for the second day of January two thousand and nineteen. My second motion.
Motion denied and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, and I think Commissioner, um, Owens is going to read his resolution.
Okay, and, uh, like Commissioner Freeman, I'm going to say a word or two before we, before we read this resolution. You know, it's no surprise why we're celebrating this, uh, Ms. Salin this today. And it's no surprise to me and a lot of you, uh, why we're doing this for Commissioner Jordan today, because it's about, you're going to hear this resolution, and it's about, uh, commitment to housing and things of that nature. And he's truly been a champion and a servant in that regard. At every turn, every time an opportunity has come to, um, to make more things happen for those people, uh, who need help and assistance with their home, him has been at the forefront pushing and, um, and looking for a yes answer at every turn to make it happen. So, uh, we wanted to honor him today, because he has been a true servant in that regard. And you'll hear a lot about that in the resolution. And it is my honor today to do this for my brother and my colleague. Resolution in honor of Commissioner Henry Jordan. Whereas the members of Gates County Board of Commissioners wish to honor Commissioner Henry Jordan for his outstanding leadership and dedication to the citizens of Gates County. And whereas Henry Jordan has unselfishly served as a commissioner since December two thousand and eight, and has shown the spirit of public service by representing the board and citizens of the county on numerous local and regional advisory boards. And whereas Henry Jordan has worked diligently to improve the quality of life for several citizens in numerous capacities, while giving special attention to the elderly and housing needs of the county. And whereas Henry Jordan has served on both the Gates County Housing Committee and the Aging and Adult Services Task Force for over ten years. And whereas during his time on the Gates County Housing Committee, he has worked tirelessly to obtain maximum funding for housing needs and ensure the committee obtained five oh one C three status. He has been instrumental in overseeing seventy-four home renovations and four replacement homes for the elderly of Gates County. And whereas Henry Jordan's contributions as a God-serving, intelligent, thoughtful, hard-working, detailed-oriented, and generous person extend far beyond his work with the elderly, housing needs, and service as a commissioner. And now therefore be it resolved that the Gates County Board of Commissioners hereby honors Commissioner Henry Jordan for his deep affection for the elderly and housing needs for a life of outstanding service and extraordinary contributions to Gates County. And be it further resolved that this resolution adopted this day of, second day of January two thousand and nineteen, shall be entered into the minutes of the Gates County Board of Commissioners and a copy presented to the family of Commissioner Henry Jordan. And ladies and gentlemen, we have, uh, two people we're honoring here today. And I'd like to ask all of you to stand for Ms. Edith and for Commissioner Jordan, Ms. Salin.
It is a pleasure for me to present you with this proclamation. I've served with, uh, Commissioner Jordan for the last four, six years that I have been on board, and he has taught me a lot. He always comes to the table prepared. Uh, he has his general statutes, I think he has been a lawyer as a summer of life. Um, but he comes to the table prepared. He is a strong advocate for all the citizens of Gates County. We learn a lot by listening to him. Hopefully, he learns a little something occasionally when he listens to us. But anyway, but what, the thing I admire most about Mr. Jordan, he has his priorities correct. Um, he is a man of faith. He is a pastor of a church, um, in Burke County. Uh, he is a family man, as we see his lovely family back there. And, you know, we talk about man of faith, we couldn't have meetings on Tuesday night, we couldn't have meetings on Friday, because that was honey-do list, and Mama's unhappy, nobody's happy. So we have, uh, but he has his priorities correct. Faith, family, and then home service. And for that, I admire him, and will continue to admire him. Thank you, Mr. Jordan, for all you did. Thank you, Mr. Jordan, for all you did. Um, Mr. Jordan, would you like to say something?
Well, I, I thank the board for this consideration and acknowledgement. I give Lord an honor to God for what I've done, if anything is noteworthy, for all of this noteworthy. And I thank my family. As you all know, I'm dealing with some illness right now. If we hadn't been with them, I wouldn't be able to do what I do up to this point. So, God bless you and thank you all. And I like what my family says to come forward here as well.
And steal for a picture.
Okay, it's anti-for. Okay, we'll go about Mike. Okay, at this time, we'll take a short break. Okay, if everyone, if we can have everyone's attention, at this time, our campaign on motion goes to public hearing concerning a wind energy facility ordinance for Gates County.
So move. Go ahead, sir. So move. Second.
A motion's been made is second. To enter to public hearing, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any public comment? I'd like to... Okay, Ms. Chair, you go ahead.
Good morning. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning.
Public hearing today is for the wind ordinance for wind energy facilities in Gates County, North Carolina. This is what is presented from the planning board from our November two thousand and eighteen meeting. And Phil said it's best represented to county. And this will add in addition to our zoning ordinance, section one fifty-five. And without going to a word for word, as we did last time, just to hit the high end of the hearing, is it includes the permit requirements, definitions, the table of permitted uses for our county and the zoning districts, and then the specifics for the permit application, setbacks, it addresses noise and shadow flicker, the installation and design, and decommissioning. Is there any specific questions?
If I have a question for, for Ms. Chair.
Ms. Chair.
Yes.
How long has the planning board been working on this?
They have been working for the past twelve months exactly, as we had a House Bill four eighty-four from the government that it needs to be addressed. And they have been diligently working, researching, asking questions. We've had NC State come for a workshop, do some presentations, just to give us a better understanding of how a wind turbine works. We don't see them every day.
And so, everyone understands, it was, the governor has told us that all the counties develop a ordinance for winds. And of course, we know that wind, the Quamons, Passatank already have wind farms up.
Yes, they do. And I did get a few tidbits of information, and they don't release a whole lot based on the benefits for the counties. And just to give a fair assessment to each side there, you know, the economic benefits could be and were estimated, and this is just for the Amazon and Farming Districts. Five hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the first year for taxes, and that amount increases every year. The jobs, the construction jobs are approximately two hundred and fifty, with a permanent approximately ten on site after that, after it's built. So, that's a few things, you know, for the county people, things just to be aware of, that we were able to get some facts out.
And the wind is, doesn't have the restrictions, the reduction on taxes that the solar?
That's what we understand, isn't it?
Due to the moratorium again in December?
We, due to them not being in session, we have, it's supposed to. Now, there were some bills out there, some restrictions, and that allows you to accept permits. It does not mean that they are to be processed. Because there is a clearinghouse again for the federal government. We also have some FAA and FCC rules to be applied, they're shut down. So, things and facts and figures, I think, to know that it is, the moratorium's expired. We do not know today, but it was supposed to be December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen.
And just so the citizens know, I think that the planning board chairman, Billy Silas here also, I was on the planning board when we started this conversation about twelve months ago. Planning board was being proactive, wouldn't you agree, Mr. Silas? Sort of got caught with solar farms, and wind came up, and the planning board decided to be proactive and trying to get ahead of the ballgame with that moratorium that was in effect, so that we would be ready in case someone did come in and apply. Is that right, Mr. Silas?
Sure.
I appreciate all your hard work being on the planning board. I know a lot of time and effort went into it, goes into it. Thank you all for all the time and effort you put into this.
Okay, any comments or questions?
Well, I have a question for Commissioner Jones. Do you, I'm not aware of why the moratorium was issued.
Lisa, that, I do remember because we talked about it on the planning board, but that was six, seven months ago.
The moratorium was originally going to be for two more years, and the governor reduced that to December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. But the moratorium was to get a handle on the installation of wind turbines and the large-scale farms due to the radar for the federal government, for their Navy bases, for any of the service-related bases up there. And there's been some issues, and new studies from MIT put out, you know, like the twenty-eight mile radius we talked about last time, you know, that really encompasses a lot of our county except to the south, towards the Yor area and the Wind Bridge. But some detailed maps, again, they're still putting those out, but that's what we've seen, the things that have kind of come into play. There's still some unanswered questions that may be, we may address this again, but this is the best we've got. This is from NC State, is basically, as they said, a vetted version of a model wind ordinance, and each and every county can make it more restricted less based on what they see or what they feel and hear from the county.
Before we hear from anyone, is there any comment from the public? Okay, you'll come up there and write.
I just have one comment to make, and I know this, some of the prior territory, and I cannot go into the whole details, but the wind farm in Passatank County, driving by there is probably only working five percent of the time. So, it's a big investment for amount of time. I do know that Dominion Power controls when the wind farms come on and when they go off, they do their solar farms. If the price of electricity right now is cheaper to produce by natural gas, they cut the turbines and the solar farms off. Now, if the gas goes up, the wind farms and solar farms come back online, and they'll tell you that they do that. And it's the economic part of those. So, if you look at the total picture of a sucker of a wind farm with the height of the antennas, well, not antennas, but the stamper and the blades, the ribbling and lights at night, is it really worth what you get for it? The people that build them tell you no. And I just, I asked everyone I went to hooking up the digital circuits that control them, and at this time, they all said it's a waste of time and money for the time being, and that's not to say that later on it isn't. But the radar, watch channel three's news, when there's a severe thunderstorm coming up and they zoom in on Passatank, Gates County, you'll see they always have a severe thunderstorm in the desert, and that's the wind farm out there. So, as we go forward, look at these issues, and see if it's really something that has changed, and talk to them and ask them how much electricity they actually produce and how many times they take them offline. Thank you.
One question, if I may, Madam Chairman. Is it, does Duke Energy also put something in that you find out in your analysis, do they have input?
Duke Energy and Dominion Energy. And it's my understanding that most, you can't send electricity from Passatank County to Wyoming or wherever. It stays in the region and it goes on and offline as they leave it. A lot of the energy that's used there now on the solar farms and the wind turbines for the Navy, when they do regional use them, a high bunch, high kilowatt hours of electricity if the wind farms come on or they go off. It depends, again, economic, who's the cheapest. And that, every fifteen, fourteen minutes, is the price of electricity. Does that work?
Thank you. Any other public comments?
A question.
Yes.
About the windmill.
Well, we haven't, probably, everyone just go call up.
My question is, good morning. My question about the windmill, and how much farm land would take up in Gates County?
Well, footprint for the windmill is very small. You could farm all range of windmills if you go up White's Way or all that, they're still farming that land. It's just a small footprint, just where the base is, and then there's some cables off to the side.
It's about eighteen-foot radius, depending on, most of all of them basically are eighteen-foot wide, and the ten-foot apron of stone, and they can still farm, really able to do that.
Much less than the solar farm. Okay. Yes. Any other public comment? Yes, sir. Mr. Taylor.
Good morning. My name is Ashley Taylor. My question is right now, is the longevity of the turbines for our county? When their usefulness is over, who is responsible for those turbines?
Ms. Chair, why answer?
We have a decommission plan in the ordinance that each, whoever decided to put in a facility, they would have to submit that along with the ordinance. And if it's not up and running for six months, they'll have to decommission and provide an estimate, take it down, and if not, it would be provided with random, if at least a group. And they're aware of that. They have to sign off on all the permits and all, and that's in the proposal.
And what is the longevity of a windmill?
Well, you don't know. I mean, the analysis, that's something that they would have to tell you when they come or ask for a special use of it.
Right now, but stupid, right now, we have a force of windmill deterioration because of the spinning in the environment, the blades are deteriorating on the heating edge, that have an effect on them on duty.
I would have to ask a professional engineer, which they would engineer and provide those answers before any permits and things were issued based on products and specifications to review.
Commissioner, I'm disagreeing with the windmill because there are ugly sites, or there are so many, when they put those things up. Thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else have a public comment? Do I have a bunch of the go-by public comment?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to address something too with Lisa as pertaining to the ordinance. After I was reading that, I did a little bit of a study and contacted Department of Commerce just to check on some things, not in disagreement with the ordinance at all, but also in addition to, and having a legal room with the general statutes in North Carolina, as it develops, we have to have some MOUs with the military and also with other organizations that are civilian. Do we have those MOUs or?
They are required, each and every, let's say, I'll call it a developer, and the proposed developer for windmills, do they have to submit to the clearinghouse and submit all the permits and required information before we would even start reviewing? And we will verify that there. And that's part of that clearinghouse, there's a clearinghouse for all windmills, wind turbines, windmills, and they are there to answer questions, in which I would feel comfortable contacting them and knowing that we have these clearances, let's say, and permits from the other installations and places that like our FAA, FCC, and that is in our ordinance and addresses that.
Okay, a motion, can I have a public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Motion for the made, public traffic, in this going?
Miss ma'am, let me see, yes, please, if you...
Oh, well, let's vote for it, if you can have a public hearing, then we'll have to answer it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, nine, Commissioner Owens.
All right, thank you ma'am. On page five. Shouldn't we, on E, shouldn't we strike where solar farm out of there?
The planning board, and he can speak, he wanted that to be as one, solar farm and the wind turbines, because of green energy effects, I guess, of both, so they would work together because they are similar, if not the same.
And this is, we have not been approached about getting wind farms.
No, no wind farms.
Just getting, being proactive.
Well, we're being proactive so that we don't have some laws on the roof in case someone does come knocking on the door, and that we have some procedures and requirements for them.
Yes, in place, that's what we would like to have. You never know when you'll get that.
And I would say, I think if you look at the wind currents, we are on the high of edge anyway, for the coastal region, not in the line of something.
That's right, we're not in a desirable area, but we are warned, technology's changing.
And technology does change and improve, so it could be, definitely, but we already have something on the roof.
Yes.
On page six, I'm, when it comes to things like this, I'm all about setbacks.
Yes.
And I jotted when I was looking over this, in the first column there, I would, I would make the small, the smallest setback be just like the one point five, I put down one point five everywhere I saw a one point one.
That's fine.
Yeah, so that would just be, that would, well, that's up to a couple of boards, but I'm not trying to send you back so you, so we can't get this done and keep coming back, but on solar farms, I was, I felt the same way, you know, I wanted it to be set back as far as it could so it would be an eyesore or anything. Of course, we're being proactive, we haven't been approached, but if you were to go back and make any changes, that would be one that I would be, would be a recommendation that would come to me.
Since you're in, you're having a public hearing, and if you're going to vote on saying you can make your changes today yourself.
Okay.
So, what would, changes would you like, Commissioner?
I'm just, I'm just saying, make the setbacks more restrictive, anywhere you say one point one. say 1.1, and that's a formula, um, to make it 1.5, and that would increase the setback. Am I saying that right?
Yes, you're right. It makes it more restrictive, more safe for buildings.
Okay, so there'll be four, that the small systems will be 1.5 all the way across the board. On the mid, medium system is just the first column that's changed, and on the large, the first column is changed. Is that correct?
Uh, I think you stated correctly, yeah. Here, first column, first man.
Just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page. Okay, any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I would be concerned that we have prohibited uses. In other words, if we're in a rural, uh, R1 residential area, we're prohibited, but, if you're, uh, if you're in, uh, R1, you're not, you're not small.
But not, is it? Let me ask this question. A small one, it's like someone has one at their home to generate, just like someone has solar panels on their roof.
Yes, residential uses.
It's, it's residential use, it's not that you would have a massive wind farm.
I understand that.
Okay.
But, uh, the top of windmill.
Yeah, the R and M, I'm talking about, just to address it, it's like if there was apartments, it, it would be hard to meet the setbacks. And also power apartments for the multifamily, the R and M, and then the O and I, the office and institutionally, we were thinking for safety and some where other counties did not allow that.
Now, when we say small, are we talking about one or two?
It's one.
Some residential, we thought we used two, or maybe three.
They could.
You know, so I, I'm more than sure about that. Especially permitted for any.
For any. Rather than have permitted for any at all?
Yes.
Now that, uh, that this has been brought up, I can tell you, or you may already be familiar with it, in Jackson, just down the road, the, uh, I guess it's the town has one right behind the Twitch Park. And actually, yes, they have two turbines there. And there, I would say the blades are maybe, and this is a guess, I haven't seen them in a while, I would say maybe the blades are sixteen foot.
Yeah, they've, they're designed, the residential use wind turbine is designed for residential. And then, like, our other things here are for the large scale applications. But again, they would be engineered for residential, so there are some made for that are a smaller scale, which are limited in height in our ordinance.
Okay, now, where is the definition for small?
Page three, okay. Yeah, page three.
Okay. How about if you read that for the public, so I think they're all held up on the standard.
The wind turbines, wind energy facilities.
Okay.
Yeah, wind energy facility small is a single system designed to supplement other electricity sources as an accessory used to existing buildings or facilities wherein the power generated is used primarily for onsite consumption. A small wind energy conservation system consists of a single wind turbine, a tower, and associated control or conversion electronics, which has a total rated capacity of twenty kilowatts or less.
So, it's really a poor first boom, poor first on home, or whatever. Uh, one of the schools, is it at the beach, has a wind turbine?
Okay.
And I can't remember which one, but one of those has one.
And twenty KW is about what a county town will use.
That's what the experts say, yes.
But going back to the table of permitted uses, Commissioner Jordan, would you like to change the permitted onto a special?
I would put all of them special.
Okay, so that's across board for small.
Which would, which would basically just require each one to be seen on its own merit and its own circumstances.
Yes. So, it'd be a special for all of them, special for everyone, including at...
Yep.
Okay. Any other?
Now, is this going to put a burden on the citizen if they want to put one up? One, and we're talking twenty kilowatt max for a small? This...
Or do you have to go to the planning board where you go?
Yeah, the Board of Adjustment for Special Use Permit, yes.
Yeah, how much is that?
Five hundred dollars.
So, if I wanted to put one up in my backyard, if we, if we dog changed it, it wouldn't cost me anything. But the way we're changing it, it's going to cost every citizen five hundred dollars for them in the backyard.
That's right, for the fee to be heard in front of the board, to be approved in the county, yes.
Well, I don't, um, that's the only part about that, Commissioner Jones, that I, that I don't like, because we're not here to make money off the backs of, of citizens, you see. But if we, if we do that, we have to meet, if you meet, we have to have, um, there's a trade-off there, Commissioner Freeman, where we go?
I think, I think what we're going to do, when you put the turbine, you've got a lot of things considered, kind of utilities, you've got to consider, area it's located in, I was going to affect all the people around it, and, uh, I would certainly, if my neighbors go build a wind turbine, I would certainly want to know, I was going to affect them. And I'd be in special use for that, because somebody's neighbor needs to say, yes, I don't want that, or yes, I do. It's, it's, uh, it's going to affect them. It's a new technology, and I guarantee it's, there's a lot of things in it. But, uh, it's going to be good for me, far as all of you can make that, in a short time, all of it.
Might make you a chicken stop laying eggs.
Over the long run, I think, I'm sorry.
Well, we're already, going back to what Commissioner Owens said, number seven, setbacks, we're already greatly restricting small systems with the change of 1.5. Is that be correct, Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Okay. Before, so everybody understands where we are. We have changed on page four, currently, all permits to be special use. And then on, on page six, we have changed small systems, the minimum setback, the 1.5, that changed it to two places, under occupied buildings and property lines. And then under medium systems, the only thing was changed was under occupied buildings and large scale occupied buildings. So, everybody knows, but the rest of the document is as is.
Well, you know, we're opening up new thoughts, so let me ask Ms. Cherry if she can answer this question for me. On page six, and this was my recommendation, I'm rethinking my recommendation, if, if we move that setback to 1.5, and a person has built their house and they just own one acre, how is that going to affect that person?
Depending on the width.
Because we're also not going to let them put that within the twenty feet of their property line from the back or either side. So, is that, are we...
Well, and that is the antenna setbacks. I mean, that's to keep it safe from occupied buildings and life and harm and things like that. And that's what we were told by NC State. This is where you work with your safety and your thoughts about your acreage or your homes or any, again, any occupied buildings that may be there. So, I mean, and dependent on their width and their depth, you, you just don't know.
You wouldn't want it to say that the tower would follow on your neighbors.
Right, that's right.
Or anything.
Good.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, um, I'll make a motion that we proceed with the, uh, the ordinance and then get the, the changes.
And the motion's been made, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
And the motion's been made, it's up in any discussion. And once again, we're just trying to get something on the books, this problem has not, or this, I shouldn't say problem, this is not, situation's not coming up, but we do have some guidelines to go back.
Um, I'm just, just going to comment, excuse me, um, going back to small, as strict as it already is, um, I'm in disagreement with that, so that will affect my vote.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, well, uh, vote, uh, we'll poll the board since, um, and we'll start with Commissioner Owens.
Um, I vote in favor of Commissioner Jordan's.
Commissioner Jordan.
I'm in favor. Uh, I'm in favor.
Commissioner Jordan, change?
Uh, yes, change.
Turn my office to the vote. So, the vote's ordered one. Thank you, Mrs. Cherry, I put, uh, your board and keep us informed for what is happening. Okay, um, next, old business, central middle school update. I see we have the Chair of the Department of Education, Superintendent Williams, as far as we have any beer.
I noticed that neither one of them nodded or closed their eyes during the meeting, because they've been good students.
I've got my trust as I do, Dr. Williams with me. Uh, first of all, Mr. Jordan, thank you for setting us all on the surface of any board on the candy gun of tremendous skill and, and I certainly appreciate all you've done and all you've been by hand, tremendous skill. Uh, well, well, we did your work. We, we have, we have the revol in for the first, uh, approval of revol. We have the second set of drawings in, uh, and some review process going on, but we should have the second revol in and ready to be installed before we get the first revol in. Uh, we did your work because we can't get inspected. And there's a question of fact that DTI hasn't violated the drawings again, and we've got a lot of them, that they did not violate the drawings again. And it's not understanding that we have a, over, now, by the Department of Insurance, and I wonder where that is in the process.
Sir, so, do you like to come forward and address all the different, why everyone has to have new inspections on the plant or reviews of the plants?
Okay, the, the, the Department of Insurance plans, uh, because of the change in the roof system and the firewalls. Uh, after speaking with Department of Insurance, they said, yes, because of the, the change in the height of that, it's not making a difference in the change in the firewalls, so we'll have to have a new, not necessarily a new, but probably a new number of, of the firewall systems. Uh, so that, that's the difference with the Department of Insurance, re, re-reviewing. Uh, I spoke with, um, the gentleman at Department of Insurance and double checked with him sometime just before the holidays, and he said, yes, they did need to be re-reviewed. I contacted, uh, AR Cheston and made sure that they were aware of getting that part re-reviewed. The Department of Public Instruction said, um, I have not contacted him, because while I was on here back from him and through, through one of the other agencies, I have not, that, the letter they've sent is really unclear to me because it's got two separate sets of dates on it. Uh, it's got a date at the top, then it's got an extra, when I re-reviewed that, it's got a review date and a receive date. It says that after that date, it's not any good. That top one may be, may be a good date, always a little cover letter saying that that's good. But like I said, DOI, Department of Insurance, we do need to re-review from them, um, because of all the other issues that is going on with that also. But that, that's really, I think from them, the only discussion that will be, is basically to double check that those firewalls have been on the proper firewall to go through a slant roof system versus a flat roof system. That should be the only changes, because that's really the only change to the plants. And of course, when they changed all that, there was also changes to some of the structural drawings, the buildings, the foundations, and that kind of stuff. So, there's been, if change, change is made all along on the project, it's, it's, it's something that's been going on with that.
Madam Chairman, would you?
Do you want to mention if you got drawings to be reviewed or whether we send...
I do not know. I talked with AR Cheston and let them know that we definitely would need that re-reviewed, so where they went from there, I do not know. And like I said, that was just, I'm going to say just before Christmas.
Madam Chairman, would you let us, let citizens know who Virgil is?
Okay. Virgil, um, is your last name?
Virgil Parish is the level three fire, level three inspector. We do not have one because we do not have that many projects that require a level three, so we contract with, for Quinnes County.
And he works for us in Port...
Yes, he.
Yes, he. We don't have as many big projects up central for most of town.
So, I would, Mr. Felton, you, you understand what you're hearing there in Virgil? I mean, we're here to, we're here to listen to both of you and, and hear what's, hear what's going on, just want to make sure that we've got both of you here and, and you can get to him quick and him getting back to you quick and get, thank you, Owens, right?
We have to find out what we got to do to make it happen.
So, the first revol is already done.
It's, it's ready to be installed, but the reason it's not being installed is we got to add the hole and sink it before you put your revol in. If you dig it today and it rains tomorrow, you got to dig it again tomorrow.
The permit, but vaguely it's not been done because the permits basically have not been issued because we have not got, and, and I, and I think and hope the last hurdle is this one little review process. Um, and I say that because I'm going to say maybe the first of December, November, we, we got one, one set of drawings for, for the changes, then like I said, just before Christmas, I'll say before nineteen, though I can't talk right now, but anyway, uh, I got another set of drawings from AR Cheston, and that was when I double checked with them to make sure that they knew that they would actually have to be reviewed from the Department of Insurance also. And, and my review is the only thing I'm seeing is, it, it should be fairly signed.
It's just getting this Raleigh to sign off on it.
As soon as they sign off on it, I feel like we're in pretty good shape to start the permit, probably that time can be issued. As soon as the permit's issued, I mean, we're ready to start inspections whenever, whenever they override.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, I, I have a question to Virgil, or at least looking for a comment. In the event that, uh, that review is negative from either Department of Construction or Public Construction or from Department of Insurance, do we have any mitigating factors that we can shut as, as pertaining to the firewall?
The, the, I can't issue a permit without DOI's approval on that set of drawings, if that's your question.
Even though it's in existence and has been in existence?
Even the what now?
The firewall that's been in existence.
The firewall, the firewall that was in existence was when there was a flat roof there. Now they've gone to a slant roof system, so the firewall, there's dozens of different types... types and styles of firewalls out there. And basically that architect engineer firm is going to tell them, okay, this is going to be a UL listed 181 firewall, and then we'll show how it comes up and meets that system. All firewall's going all the way to, going through the roof, depending on what type of roof memory, depending on all different scenarios, was been known before it basically went to that flat roof. Now you've got a metal roof, so now this firewall's got to go up and even to, or through that metal roof, basically that's the scenario that it should be. The only change is, is what type of firewall we're going to use on this type of roof.
Dr. Williams.
Mister.
Are you aware of any contacts in Raleigh that you might be called to try to ask that I can review?
Yes, sir.
I think that would help us out.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Certainly, we want to start seeing, I mean, everybody's anxious to see work beginning in earnest, that is a lot of work that's already been done, but, you know, seeing it being poured, it's, it's a nice day, even though the paddle operate, but temperature-wise, it's been nice, uh, performance seen now. Yes, sir?
Yes, I'd just like to make a comment. Commissioner Jordan, I always said, Dr. Jordan, I just want to thank you very much for everything that you have done for me. When I came to the county in 2012, you were one of the first people to come up and talk to me about school and education and all the important things in life. So I'm glad that I was here today to see, you get honored and receive the resolution that Mr. Owens read, and so I'm with you, brother. I appreciate it, I'll do much.
Thank you. Moving along, budget amendments.
No, we're still under old business.
Oh, I'm still trying to get, I'm trying to get out, okay, discussion, to request to increase the fire fees. Mr. Bright.
Madam Chairman, board members, I'd like to thank you again for entertaining our resolutions to increase these fire fees, and I have sent some packages, I presume everybody has those. If you want the information on NFA standards, again, I will reiterate, NFA standards are not law, there are statute, there are recommendations, but in the event of a motor vehicle accident, death, injury, worker comp claim, the fire chief involved, the court you have in jurisdiction will be held to those standards. So that's what we base these fees on. Also, mileage, I know you sent out a request to the fire chief for the mileage of trucks, fire trucks, not like a car, we've got a 2,000 core engine, I think, that's got 12,000 miles on it. The problem is, the engine is sitting there with the weight of the equipment, the springs and chassis, but the NFA does have a pretty good guideline about checking and what they recommend. I can answer any questions, we're talking in the fire departments and we're still...
Okay, I first of all to congratulate you on your new tanker that was mentioned, that you received through FEMA, about 95% of the total package, certainly a very nice looking truck. But I will comment that Sunbury was one of two stations that did not give us mileage on their, their vehicles, their engines or tankers.
Keith said he did, I don't know what he said.
I have a piece of paper in front of me.
I understand.
I was going to say, he did not. And, okay, now, as you said, these were not required, but standards.
Correct.
Correct. Of course, now we know that the Insurance Commission standards are issued by, and the Fire March issued rates.
Fire March issued rates, yeah.
Okay, and they of course check to see if the department's equipment and things, and equipment for the personal fire, firemen as well as the trucks and all meet certain standards, I would assume.
That's correct.
And I believe that yours has had a reduction in that fire, I mean, has improved that fire rating, they have worked, despite last year.
Oh, of course.
And you were, and yours went down as well, Sunbury, possible is up for this year.
That's correct. The dates will be there.
Okay, and so they, everybody's moving in the right direction. Okay, Commissioner Jones.
This started last year before I took office, so I might have a couple of extra questions that, that are already answered, but I wanted to hear that, meaning, well, the amounts that you're looking to increase are 20, 25, 30, and 38. How was that thought about determined?
Now, just coming from the old amounts, just taking that seriously.
Uh, Ms. Hopper made a comment, you know, I, I looked at this last week after I got the packet, according to my math, $16,000 for $326,000 truck is all you have to pay, is that about right?
Yes, exactly.
That's a heck of a deal.
Yes, it is. But, there's the buts with that.
Of course, of course.
You have to be following the NFA standards. The FEMA people just don't give out money if you have a certain percentage of members certified firefighter level two, certified firefighter level one, and works to give a drive, and reporting the numbers, and replacing your turnout gear according to NFA standards to be eligible for that. And our department has been able to get over a million dollars with FEMA grants since the inception of that, because we are, Sunbury does, have a pretty standard training program, and our average for 2017, 2018 is a hundred hours per member. And firefighter level two, hazmat, safety officer, National Fire Academy, fire emergency calls, and we, all our officers go to the fire officer, training officer, they're all, and the new departments do the same thing.
Yeah, I, I appreciate you, everything that you guys do, the time and effort. I know a lot of time goes into a training and meetings and stuff, and, you know, I know you and Billy are paying this off right now, you're dropping about what you're doing, which, which is a good thing. I campaigned on, I was a public safety, we need to make sure that our other safety officials have every opportunity and all the needs met. One of my biggest concerns, and, and we need to be proactive, you know, we're talking about middle scope right here, too often times we're reactive, in the past, I think it's important that we be proactive going forward. What, what bothers me is the amount. Yours is level five now, is that right, Billy? Thanks to your, I save money on my homeowner's insurance, I don't know the exact amount, but you're talking for a residential house of my size, $25 more a year for a fire fee.
That's correct.
Divided over 12 months in escrow, it's $2 or some change a month.
$2.
That's worth somebody in my house having to call 911 for a fire, and you guys have the best equipment that's available to you, to be able to come clean my house or my neighbor's house. The, what, what concerns me is, is that amount, is that amount enough? You know, and, and that's the thing, you know, I see, you know, Billy, Billy's in here, guys in here, you're in here, you're all private, you give it your all, but why 20, why not 10, why not 30? I think it would be important for us as commissioners to see what the needs are now and, and full citizens' knowledge. The info provided for the Gates, the Gates County Fire Fees is what's collected per year now, which is $301,454. With this new projection, it will be $452,000, and up to 10 years from now, it'll be $731,000.
That's correct.
I would like to see, I, I'm not for increasing any taxes, this is a fee that would go to more legislation, but I would like to see us be proactive, look to the future, maybe county manager set up a workshop with the fire chiefs and commissioners to see what the fire department needs are now and what they're going to be in a few years down the road. Think it'd be good to have us all around the table, and anytime you're talking about money, I think, as, as Ms. Holly talked about earlier with, with her group, anybody that's affected needs to be sitting at the table and, and have a say so. So that, that's going to be my recommendation, Madam Chairman, is before one of our night meetings, maybe a workshop with the fire chiefs from each department and the commissioners to sit down and go over what the needs are now and what's going to become in the future so we can plan ahead. And see if this amount's enough.
Mayor, since he's kind of brought me into the conversation, Kara Maloney, who does a lawyer who also teaches classes at the School of Government at Chapel Hill, responded to some questions I had submitted, and as Melissa, she's aware of in-service contracts that we have with any of the fire departments in the county, because legally we're supposed to have a contract with each fire department in order to provide them with funds. So, we will read, I'm requesting that no action be taken today, so we can go back and research that, and if so, to see what is, what it says in there, because Kara sent me a lengthy email that I will forward to each of the commissioners, that says the contract should specify the level of services and performance expectations, as well as any reporting and accounting requirements, and the commissioners may make payment under the contract condition on compliance by the fire department, all provisions in the contract. And it also says the county must require the volunteer fire department to provide some sort of accounting in order to perform its oversight duties. So there's a lot of different layers that have been brought up because of this fire fee request that I just now resisted an answer to.
I think that's probably what, what we need to do is to get Diane in with this new information.
See what a service contract is for.
And just take...
We, we have a service contract in place with the county, I don't know if one has that already.
Not some of these specifications that's detailed, that's all the government.
Okay, originally, we came up with this in 1999, and what it was, Mr. Do the fire course, at that time, the car wash, which we didn't have, now it's, we're the fourth difference to state of North Carolina, that is part of our requirement for nine S and above fire rates. And the only thing about it, money was to submit your budget, and it was never enforced once a year, much of spending money on level two that we had originally.
And I bet we need to have more, so...
I agree, and, and the association would be in favor of that. Thing we're looking at now is to get us going forward to address your thoughts too, is we have a deadline to get something started to rock, April or May, probably, sometimes it could go before the House, it could go before the Senate, that Crossfield will come back and be, and let them into law. We have no problem with this association sitting down with board or board members or committee and coming up and stipulations to meet the state guidelines.
But this is not, but this is not a contract with the association, she stipulates this is a contract with each fire department.
Each fire department would have their proof, a representative of that, so each fire department.
No, the contract is not with the association.
I, I know what you're saying. Each fire department would come in as the Gates County Fire Department, everybody has the same contract, now.
Now, in life.
Now, in life.
But we would have a look at that, it might not be in the future that, because they're different sizes, different areas, and everybody...
And every department's a little bit more expensive, it costs Sunbury more to do it, and we wouldn't be able to achieve what we, yours, for example, does not have the miles, spread miles, and the particular hours, the things that we had to have in Sunbury to get the same rating, it cost yours a whole lot less. I know what we spent to get that same rating, it was a lot of money. And Piles one might not, also, I know that Sunbury corporate fire station is largely in the county, response time, response, this past year we had a fire call, and we responded 22 times and we collated other departments, so we have, we have a whole lot more going on, it costs us a little bit more, and the way it is now, we set up in the past, each department said we're going to miss this. Yours is unfortunate, they have a lot of fundraisers and their citizens support. Sunbury does not have that time now because we have a lot of transit people moving in and out, the big trailer park, and it's different, it's not a small community like Sunbury used to be. We used to do a pickpicking in Sunbury, we could raise 12, 13,000 dollars, you won't do that today, so, but we base these fees that we gave you, the packet that we gave last November, is this projection of what equipment costs 10, 15 years from now, and I know the General Assembly also can leave it, several counties have an open engine, there is low amount, they have a set amount, and then they review it, they look at it every year, there's statute on the books, so they can go up to a certain amount of money. But we just want to get this ball rolling, so a year from now, or two years from now, we can start having the funds to what we need to do.
We certainly want to get the ball rolling, but we also want to get, have the information, all the information we need to make good decisions. And so I think we do need to check, have a study session or start, get, look at all contracts that all counties have with fire departments and all.
You have a specific, you have a right now that you need right now. Not right now, but, we were, we were producing, we were looking forward, and I don't speak for Sunbury, so we've got, get another grant, we've got a truck right now that we're going to have to replace, I put in a, we have truck replacements, $405,000. If we get it, we'll pay 5%. If we don't get it, we might wait another year, and we're going to have to be looking elsewhere to replace that truck.
And of course, FEMA is not all of the grants, doesn't the, don't y'all have matching grants through the...
State of North Carolina, yeah.
State of North Carolina.
They only match $20,000 on a truck.
But like, but they would take care of some implement, some like your assembles that the fire...
Oh, we do that now, we do that now, every department here in the county, I think, except one, does that. We spent 70, we had $70,500 of matching grant money in our department this past year.
Okay, do I have a motion?
We're looking to table this until our night meeting in March, that's our next night, night we...
Well, we have a meeting, you know, two, a couple of weeks, but...
I would say that is not going to be too soon. I think this would be better held for the night.
Well, also, you're looking at a deadline too, whatever the crossover is or the General Assembly's timeline.
And that has not been published, they don't convene until January the 9th.
No.
Go ahead.
I say table it and not put a specific date.
Okay, okay.
But that way we can, she, our county manager can come up, get the information, give us packets to study and move forward, and we can, if we get enough information, we might start discussion at our night meeting in January.
We can start developing our questions and send them back to Natalie for the email for the study.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we table this until the county manager gets the information we need, so there's discussion, and we can make a decision.
Okay, did you start the motion, though?
No, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Jordan, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, a motion is been made to instruct the county manager to give the information for us to study what we want to do.
Being proactive is a good thing.
Yeah, yeah, being proactive is good.
That's all we want to do.
And we still would like to have the mileage on trucks.
Okay, we'll deal with that.
And through January, well, December 3rd versus the deadline for this financial report, so sometime this month, we should be receiving all of the fire department's information as well.
Did you probably get it from the last department that has not responded in the past?
We have that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we move on to new business, and that is budget amendments.
Madam Chairman, we've done all that.
Did we go up on the motion?
Oh, no, we didn't, I was, okay, we're going on to the table for fire information
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we move on to new business, and that is budget amendments.
Madam Chairman, we've done on that.
Did we go to a motion?
Oh, no, we didn't. I was... Okay, we're going on to table the fire information until we instruct the county manager. All those in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
All those. Thanks, keep me straight. That's your job.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to new business and budget amendments. County manager?
Ms. Allen serves that.
This is I, Finance Director, Director. She has been on board since when?
September.
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 Good morning, how are you guys?
Good morning. It was nice to see you.
Me too. Our budget amendments twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one are all from the same review. Some of this was far from what I started, but budget amendment twenty-nine was for workers' comp. Basically, what we're doing is, it was based on an estimate, and I have to speak correctly, now. And we have recently received back after paying the invoice what was the actual expenses for each department. So this is moving around between the funds, what should have been expensed to each department. We didn't have to, we're not requesting any additional money, we're just moving it around between the different departments. The same for budget amendment thirty and thirty-one, property and liability insurance. Budget amendment thirty is for front eleven. We get a separate one for front sixty-one. So were there any questions on that, sir?
Okay, and we have...
I'll leave twenty-eight in a minute.
We have this every year, because every year we have to do the estimates for workers' comp and the insurance, and then they give us the real numbers.
Sure.
So do I have a motion to approve the budget amendments twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one?
I'll move, Madam Chairman, second.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any additional questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And I forgot, I had put twenty-eight in there, I apologize. Twenty-eight was the fifty thousand dollar donation from the Gates County Historical Society for, to help pay for the window restoration in the historic courthouse.
I said donation.
Yes.
Okay. Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we, we need an approval of...
The fifty thousand dollars, accept the fifty thousand dollars.
I make a motion that we accept that.
So, aye.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. I don't think it's going to be in the discussion if somebody's going to give us money. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I believe we got thirty-two.
Yes. Thirty-two, that was for, to move money out of, I think it was front sixty-one, from their fund balance, or was it to put their water lines down from the Department of Transportation? My understanding from Timmy, when he brought it, I think in the future you can get reimbursed for those expenses. So right now, we're just paying for it to be reimbursed at a later time.
Okay. DOT sometimes is slow in reimbursement, but they do reimburse. Okay, pleasure board.
I'll make a motion. Will you approve budget amendment thirty-two, Madam Chairman?
I'll second a motion, Madam Chairman.
A motion's been made and seconded to approve budget amendment thirty-two. Any comments?
Now, do you know, is that for particular...
It's for, I forget how many projects. It's quite a view because of different projects that they have, replacing culverts and bridges in the county, social...
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, EIC grant.
In your packet is the EIC Community Services Block Grant Program for fiscal year twenty. And as in the past, as we see on the first cover letter, it is time for them to submit an application. And this is for the second year of the three-year cycle. They would like for you to submit comments, if possible, and then if you approve it, well, you need to take a vote to approve or disapprove so that the information can be sent back to them.
And this is the second year of the three-year cycle?
Correct.
When you're saying they would like to make recommendations or comments, that's coming from you?
No, that is coming from the Mr. James, Dr. James Jones, who is the C and Community Services Block Grant Program Director with EIC.
Are you going to submit recommendations for it approved?
We did that last year.
Okay.
So if we can do it again this year, if you'd like.
This is pretty standard.
I'll make a motion to approve the EIC grant to receive a big contribution.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to approve the grant for CSDG funds for the next year. Any form of discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed? If that is approved. Okay, next is a discussion by Pasquotank County and their request for us to relate to the DA's office.
This is an article that was in the Daily Advance on December the twentieth, and I wanted it brought to your attention because halfway through the article, it does not discuss solar farm tax, and actually makes reference to Pasquotank County wanting to go to legislature to have a special legislation that would compel other counties that are served by the DA and public defender to make financial contributions. And currently, Chawan, Currituck, and Gates do not contribute to the cost of housing all of the officials in Pasquotank County.
Say those names again.
Chawan, Currituck, and Gates. For Quimmins and Camden, they do make contributions. Deer County is also a part of this court district. However, they do not pay anything because the DA has made the decision to house public defenders and an associate DA down in Deer County at their court facility. And for Commissioner Johnson, I'll back story. Before I begin, were the previous commissioner, I mean, previous manager brought before the commissioners, a motion to not pay for the facilities in Pasquotank because Pasquotank made the decision to remove the public defender's office, the juvenile defender's office, and all of their other staff into Pasquotank County. Pasquotank refurbished some rooms or a building and agreed to house them there. There has never been a written formal agreement for this. This was just something that Pasquotank took upon themselves when the DA decided that he would want everyone housed in one location. When Chawan County housed the juvenile, I believe it was the juvenile public defender, they never charged anyone for any of their services. And before they moved, or after they moved, Chawan said they would not contribute. Currituck said they would not contribute, and the commissioners made the decision to not contribute. When I began working in two thousand fourteen, the then county manager came, made the same request, and the commissioners again made the decision not to make a financial contribution to Pasquotank County because we do have an office right on the other side of this wall that is for the DA use. I've also had very short communication, my email with Chawan and Currituck counties. They were going to discuss that their first January meeting, and Currituck was going to, the recommendation was going to be made that they go on record against paying Pasquotank County, being forced to Pasquotank County when they have facilities in their court for them to use.
And there, are they meeting today?
I don't, I think they meet the first Monday. They said that they would meet next week.
So there's this article, Madam Chairman, titled Pasquotank Seek Lower Solar Form Tax Break. It's in the Daily Advance on Thursday, December twentieth. Talks about solar farm tax breaks. But by halfway through, the county manager said, starts talking about them wanting more money. And just for the public, this article is stating that Pasquotank estimates that Chawan, Currituck, and Gates should be paying a combined sixty thousand dollars for the use of their facilities. But we have an office here, like the county manager said. What gives me is the district attorney and the chief public defender both opposed it, and the administrative officer, office of the courts director came before it and opposed it and suggested the AOC with fund renovations. But nothing has come out of offer, and nothing has changed. So the offer was made by the courts, and they've not accepted for whatever reason. Very interesting, someone was offering to do something, and it wasn't accepted.
And the last time the counties were approached, Sheriff Hoffman and I attended a meeting with Chawan, Currituck, Gates, Camden, Quimmins, Pasquotank, Deer was not present. And this was brought up again in two thousand sixteen, and again, the three counties said, no, we will not pay because at that time, we were presented some calculations which would cost fourteen thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars for the year for us to pay what Pasquotank considered to be our fair share of housing staff.
Do you want to make that in a form of motion?
I'll make that a motion.
I will second that motion that we stand by our original decision that the DA's, if they need office, we have office space here. Okay, a motion has been made and seconded in the proper discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's always interesting when the DA doesn't even want. I can understand he wants to stay together. Okay, moving on to commissioners' appointments. We serve on this meeting, but we serve on a lot of different boards. If you look here, you see the various boards that we have. We need to add in one personnel board at the bottom and put Jack Oren's name beside That was left off. As you can see, all of us have like three or four boards that we sit on. What is the pleasure, I mean, is there any questions you might have?
I don't believe the medical transportation board is correct for me.
Okay, yes.
No, that's a different board. I believe you are still on that board, but we've not met. We've not ever met. We've not had a need to meet.
It had been a great... She gets a great idea.
No, this one, this one is not yet. No, this one's the medical transportation, which allows other providers to come in and provide transportation services in case of emergency.
This happened at Harrell's when I have this.
I believe so.
I believe that's what it is.
Right. We've not had any applications to provide other transport, so that's why we've not done.
So you'd like that on that one? Okay, you know, and it's a good thing to bring that up because no need to have something, but it's, in case someone requests, so...
The Commissioner Jones needs to be appointed.
Commissioner Jones needs to be appointed to take over the ones...
Unless we wish to make changes.
John was going to sit there thinking he was not going to get anything.
Commissioner Felton. So, Commissioner Felton was appointed by this board, but Commissioner Jones was appointed by GSS. I think what we can do is we can make a agreement to switch appointments. Let Commissioner, uh, past Commissioner Felton serve out, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Jones serve out, Commissioner Felton.
I thought you were appointing...
I'm actually going about a state commission, so that wouldn't work yet. Doctor, I mean, excuse me, Ms. Director Holly is actually looking into the legality, still serving, the subservicial ad state, a firm, so she doesn't have an answer yet, per the mail last week, she said.
Well, you may want to make note, Ms. Holly, that the commissioners appoint a commissioner, and you could switch if they so choose. But that the doctor, Commissioner Felton's been in the application. I don't have, we need to check on it.
I thought when we agreed, when, I did it when we agreed in July. You were appointing Billy Felton for two years as the commissioner appointee?
The commissioner appointee does not necessarily have to be a commissioner, does it?
That's my understanding.
That's what we...
It's always, it's a, it's a different situation because I'm already on the board. But as long as, as long as Ms. Holly, Director Holly, it's always been two commissioners serving on that board, as far as you can remember, to by him.
Yeah, well, you put two commissioners on board, they have all decided about six years ago or so.
But we will have to, people who are commissioners, the judges would be wearing adult pants.
Right.
But most of the Feltons can continue to serve.
As you said.
So I don't, it's not a thing. It's just that he will not be, he will be the out appointee, he is not a commissioner.
As, as long as the commission is okay with that.
And we don't wait in the response.
Right, that's right. Director Holly was...
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Okay, so can we go ahead and approve this as, just leave the Gates County Board of Social Services slot? I mean, we'll cross that eye.
So, but instead of, I've not heard anyone make a recommendation that Commissioner Jones replaced Billy Felton on Alamo River Solid Waste Management Authority and the PCG Land Field Commission.
Okay, then, and Jack, the personnel?
Right.
Does anybody want to trade anything, meet in times bad or anything? Next, we're on to peace till next year.
The solid waste manag, I'm sorry, the solid waste management authority and PCG, they typically meet two times a year at ten and eleven in Portobello County.
And why Jack is, or personnel, because of his business, this, the personnel meets the four-hour regular meeting, so it's easier for him to get to, is that correct?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
So?
Use a kiss to keep it simple, sorry.
Well, tell me again, Natalie. I'm not trying to get out of these meetings, but I am trying to make it as easy on Commissioner Jones and myself, same time, Alamo Regional Solid Waste Management Authority.
And PCG, they typically, two times a year, we've asked, right, and we, but we've asked for quarterly meetings, actually, so we can better, get a better handle on the budget and some other issues that have been coming up. And they meet back, back, as you said, at ten AM and eleven AM in Hartford. Typically, it's been May and June, April and June, something like that, at budget time.
But we have asked for, I'm on the landfill one, and like I say, it's back to back with during, in the spring with budget. We have asked for quarterly meetings because sometimes there are issues with the landfill that we need to bring out.
With Commissioner Jones and I have chatted about possibility of these changes without knowing the meeting times or meeting dates or the number of meetings. Would the board be opposed to me appointing to Alamo Regional Solid Waste Management Authority and Quimmins, Chawan, Gates Land Field Commission and, and take the personnel board appointment? and the Quinones County Gates Landfield Commission, and, and take the Personnel Board appointment?
Okay, with what, with partners of health and juvenile crime?
He would be taking those over, we would be horse trading here. Look, I'm a kid, that's still.
PC meets at the community center at lunchtime.
That was, that's another.
You don't have far to go.
It's a inconvenience.
Okay, so, we are saying, so it will be clear, we're considering putting Gates County Partners of Health and Juvenile Crime Convention Council to Jonathan Jones, and that Jack Owens will be Personnel and the Alamo Regional Solid Waste and Quinones County Landfield.
I'll be trading two for three.
Okay, I will make the motion that we make the firing changes in our commission appointments, that Jonathan Jones will serve on Gates County Partners of Health and Juvenile Crime Convention Council, and that Jack Owens will serve on Alamo Regional Solid Waste Management Authority, Quinones County and Gaze County Landfield Commission and Personnel Board, with understanding that Mr. Jones is also a member of the DSS Board.
So, then, motion.
Okay, that is made a second, do we have any further discussions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Black Alamo will willingly serve, and we do try to make it so it's easier on people's schedules, there's some that are.
Jonathan is worse.
Yeah. Of course, I, every time I go.
You got a position, you got a position. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, did we have any citizens' comments?
You have two more additions.
Oh, yeah, that's a.
Child protection.
I wrote these on the side and I had it underneath my notebook. Okay, the appointment of the child protection team, we have a handout from Mrs. Holly.
Yes.
Did you need to say anything?
Commissioner Snackley, before including this on today's agenda, as the Gates County DSS Director slash Gates County Community Child Protection Chairperson, I'm requesting appointment of the newly appointed sheriff, the person of Sheriff Ray Campbell, to be appointed to the Gates County CCPT according to General Statute seven B, fourteen oh seven B two, that says a local law enforcement officer may be appointed by the board of county commissioners.
And Sheriff, um, Campbell has agreed to?
Yes, I'm already spoken with him.
Okay, do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Sheriff Campbell.
And I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
Motion to be made a second, in discussion.
Thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you. And also, Commissioner James has brought for us something like local channels.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What I passed out before the meeting is in regards to a stellar market modification. What this is in regards to is in two thousand and fourteen, the FCC gave satellite providers, actually gave people the opportunity to get their local channels switched with satellite clinics. An issue that's been brought to my attention is we don't get North Carolina news in Gates County, we get Virginia news. You know, if it wasn't for the index, the pilots stopped putting out newspapers in Gates County, is, is what's recently happened. Basically, what you have before you is a packet stating the process of how our market could be modified. Some citizens have asked it, and I told them I'd bring it forward, but basically, as a county governor, it wouldn't cost us a dime to request North Carolina local channels on our satellites. Put, reading, reading it and doing some research, there's a possibility that we can keep our local channels that we consider local now in Virginia, and also pick up some North Carolina channels, which I think might be a good thing, going back to public safety. So, I would like to ask the county manager or her delegate to follow up with this process, bring it back forward forward when she sees fit about possibly starting this process, and if something that the citizens would want, it was not going to cost us anything, just a little bit of time and research and putting a request in together to the FCC.
And what, Washington and Greatville Station?
It, it does state that the TV channels would have to be able, they have, they have to want to come to our area. So, you look, we're sort of, WRL's NBC, WITN is NBC, you know, Jack has a pull with WRL, but they would want to cover us, but we would get North Carolina news and Virginia.
Now, on my satellite, I'm just asking, on, on my satellite, you know, I pay a fee to get the local channels, so, but I haven't paid a dollar.
You have a dish for the right.
I have a dish.
You have a dish, if you look at your bill, you're paying a North Carolina telecom fee and not getting any North Carolina services from it. That's something that has been brought to my attention, and, and look at your bill, because the person asked me, and sure enough, I got the bill the next day, and we're paying nine, ten, eleven dollars to North Carolina and not getting any services from stations in North Carolina.
Except for child too?
That's right, yes, yes, ma'am.
Uh, I think it's something we need to investigate certainly, and that is one of the complaints, that we live in a desert for North Carolina news.
It's kind of orphaned county, is what we've observed.
Well, basically, everything always east of ninety-five is, but anyway, well, I don't think we have to have a motion, but a direction to, for the county manager to get some research and see what can be done.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
It would be wonderful. Okay, any citizens' comment?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Holly?
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Uh, thank y'all for having me, even after it's been a while. Ms. Hoffler had me a little while ago, while I was so serious. I guess all everything I do, I take it serious, it's called, that reflects back on me. Something I said here today, I've been involved in a lot, but I am part of this community for thirty seven years. I am God Holly, I am on the Gate Fire Department, so I'm being affected by that too, but whatever goes on here, it may be in some way or another. About Gate Fire Department, we are doing good, we all, we have thirty seven years in with the department, and in two thousand and nineteen, we had said that we're going to be in the, so we just said, uh, I want to say something about this, also about the senior son that we want, we would like to have here in the county. I've been part of the Alamo Senior Game for a little over eight years now. I got involved in it because of Reverend, um, Bill Preston, but he'd been talking about getting involved in, involved in, and so I found I got involved in it. And then, a friend of mine, Gene Eason and myself, we're not ambassadors of the Gates County, we represent the Gates County, the Alamo Senior Game. Before we got in there, getting involved in Alamo Senior Game, I didn't know anything about it, now I know a whole lot about it. Gates County have more people, since Gene and myself have been involved in, in the Alamo Senior Game, Gates County out of nine counties, Gates County have more people involved in the senior game since we've been involved in it. Because every year we recruit, we recruit people to get involved in, into the senior game. I don't know if y'all seen a brochure of what the senior game offer, okay, some have something or not, but it helped people to have a longer life, that was helpful, that was all about. And, you know, and I'm not here for God, I'm here for the people of the community. Every time I've been in Gates County, I always have worked or done something for the Gates County community, I've worked in Gates County community somewhere, not because I have to, because I enjoy having kids and the adult that come out there. Same thing with the senior game, I do it to help other people, that's my life, I'm in the fire department to help other people, so not for me. You know, a hundred and forty will come from heaven, I already know that. So, what God can do, I ain't got to do it. So, he wanted me, my buddy Eugene Eason, who had been here today, where he had dropped from, he's a, he serves in Vietnam War, so y'all might see him walking every day up and down the highway, cause of trying to keep it up going, that's part of being in the, in the, involved in senior game. But like I say, he had dropped from this morning, that's why I'm not here. You know, Gates, uh, North Carolina have over thirty thousand seniors participating in the senior game every year. North Carolina have more seniors than any other state in North Carolina, that's a hundred of counties in North Carolina, we have more, North Carolina have more participating in the state, in the whole state of, than any other state in the world, that's a lot. I had opportunity to go to Birmingham, Alabama, called the senior game, it was thrilling. I went down there, I represented the Alamo Senior Game, not Gates County, but I'm part of Alamo Senior. So, I went down there, I participate, I come out, uh, supplement internationally, that's what I'm holding to be. This year, I'm qualified to go to New Mexico, Ms., my wife, she's qualified to go to New Mexico this year, we're going on to represent the Alamo Senior Games, you know, but also, I'm saying I'm Gates County, you know, cause, and I went to, to down there, I went to France, South Carolina, playing in a warhorse chariot, on back of my shirt, North Carolina, Gates County, that's what I represent. And so, for the people in Gates County, this senior son that we might have is not going to take advantage of the Gates County community son, which I worked there too, but it does have to keep it in the community to come out there and help, know the help. Cause see, going to the Gates County community son, the senior can't go out there and play basketball, they can't go out there and do the stuff that the younger people do, but the senior son will have this stuff set up for them, for people fifty years old and over. So, see, that's what I'm trying to, to help and hope that y'all see, not because I'm, you know, fifty, but when I get eighty years old, I want to help everybody go and participate. So, when I go away to these state final game, or put to nationally, CD people, old fifty, eighty years old, ninety years old, a hundred years old, like Ben Freeman, I just participate, you know, it, I, I, I say I tip my hat to y'all, the CD people running three hundred, uh, running around the track field three, uh, three times, people out there just walking like a singer, running, because they've been, uh, involved in the senior game at their son. Gates County will have a, have a senior son, but most of y'all counties around here, they have one, I've been to it, and I see what they do all day long, and those people, they enjoying themselves. So, you know, I voted for y'all, but I, I see, I had a vote for y'all, and I'm glad I, I had put my name, put a chip side of it, cause you know, you represent Gates County, and I'm hoping you do the right thing and for the people of the community. So far, this is that y'all saying is good thing, and I feel like that we have voted for good people for their community, you know, that's in my heart. I don't even tell people that I voted for you, but I mean, this time I, I feel good about it. And to make, make the decision about the fire department stuff, make the right decision, that's it. Y'all remember, all of us, and I mean, I've been in the Gate Fire Department over thirty years, Sunbury, they have, uh, Mr. Bright been in that over thirty years. Remember, when you come to a vote and looking at the fire department, and remember, all those people that are in there are volunteers, they have four times y'all to go to, you know, sometime I go to a four o'clock fire call, I go to work that day about four times y'all, I drag, I be dragging, sleeping sometimes, but it's in my heart to do it, it's my community, you know, I'm providing safety for everybody in my area. You know, Mr. Bright said something about Sunbury being a big area, I think Gates, look at the map, Gates is pretty big, well, a lot of people would get in Gates area, so, you know, that's kind of possible with that, but I'm not going to focus, you know, Will just said, our own fire department is doing a great job, you know, I mean, I command all of them, even Virginia, you know, we train in Virginia on some occasion, so, you know, so don't say one and double it, I would not say it. So, when you make a decision, make sure you remember that all of us are volunteer, and we'll do everything for this community, our county that we live in, but also, look at the senior son if you can, and see if it's something that we can work out there, help our senior in this community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, any other? Okay, we'll start going at the far end of the table, Mr. Jones for Commissioner's comment.
Well, to exceed tonight, I'll have to go first, sorry. Exciting day, resolutions honoring Ms. Higgins and Henry for your years of service, thank you, Henry, for everything you've done, and will continue to do for the county, and thank you, Ms. Jordan, for putting up with it, even more so these days, his words. Exciting to hear about new middle school, think that's going to be really good for our county and for ours, our kids, and especially my kids. I would like to sort of steal or piggyback off the, the school board, I, I am aware that the school board, there's five school board members, and each one of them is adopted by a school in the county. Anytime that something goes on at that school, their school board member is invited to or let known about it. I, I would like us to look into that as commissioners, somehow working with something with superintendent or his delegate and county manager, basically where the commissioners are adopted by the school, and if there's an event or something going on, we know about it, don't have to go, you know, it could be a performance or play, it could be an event, but we're given the opportunity to be in that school, maybe we see something that has been happening that hasn't been addressed, that might not be addressed, but again, it goes back to, and you're going to hear me say it, from time to time to come, being proactive. Not sure how feasibility of that would work, but I think it would be a good thing, just so that we can have a set of eyes on the school, and again, you wouldn't have to go, but the opportunity is there for us as commissioners to know what's going on at the school, and something to be rotated every year. Thank you to the citizens that came today, please reach out to me, I brought this stellar info from citizens to reach out to me, please let me know if there's anything I can help you with, thank y'all.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate everyone's input that were here today and, and their thought process that goes with it. We appreciate those calls that we get from all the citizens, and many that know sometimes what's coming up in the commissioners' meetings, and it helps us, certainly helps me, make a better decision and or decision and a vote towards whatever it is that you want, because my agenda is Georgia, I really do not have anything except what majority of folks have to say and come to me, and that's settled with. So, please contact us, stay in touch with us. Again, awfully proud to, to have these resolutions in front of us today, certainly my aunt, Sissy if you will, celebrating number one hundred, but also my fellow Commissioner, Jordan, that I'll refer to as Henry, because I sat here with him for a few years now, when I was on the planning board, the meetings he would attend and the input he would have in our planning board meetings, so I appreciate that all through the years, Henry, and thank you, sir.
Thank you. Happy New Year, and may everyone have a best two thousand and nineteen. Thank you for coming, I bet you had a good day, and started all off on all the things that we discussed, and I think the citizens are going to be blessed. And thank you for the commission and the resolution, and I give praise and glory to God above, what I've been doing here.
Amen, amen. Well, Henry, it was good to see your family here today.
Yes.
Yeah, they have a lot to be proud of, sometimes it's okay to be proud, so.
uh, so we were glad they were here with us, thank you, citizens, for coming, and, uh, I agree, Henry, I think we had a good meeting, had things of real substance, and some things that we can follow through on to improve our, improve our county, thank you, Mr. Freeman, we'll conduct that deal.
Thank you, everybody, for coming, um, today, it was a pleasure to have the resolution, so that's a good part of the job, recognizing citizens who have contributed so much to our county over the years, and continue to contribute to the county for a longer time. Um, one other thing, Miss Edith, there's a hundred years of art and life and family, she has an art showing, uh, coming up, uh, at Studio Thirty-Two, featuring Miss Edith, her daughter Pig, and Erin Silent, the granddaughter, um, it's the, exhibit will be out in January thirteenth, February twenty-fourth, with a reception on January thirteenth, uh, so that is a remarkable as well, uh, I hope today you see that all of us take our jobs seriously, we, uh, certainly, we try to study the issues, and as you can see today, we all learn things, and we need more information so that the decisions we make are hopefully the best decisions for all the citizens of county, um, and as always, one thing that we always have to consider is monetary factors, and, uh, that, for a small county, is a very difficult decision sometimes, but, um, I'm looking forward to getting the information from our county manager on the issues about the fire department, about the local, um, te, channels, um, also about, um, this senior stuff, uh, senior summer, so, you know, we have a lot of things on our plate, uh, this is the beginning of the new year, I hope everyone has a healthy new year, uh, and a prosperous one, and we will meet again on Wednesday, which is unusual for us, but Wednesday, January twenty-third, at seven o'clock, here at the courthouse, for our night meeting, okay, and I will entertain an election for Jordan.
Hello, sir.
Election's going to be the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.